Thank you for joining us this afternoon for the July eighteenth, twenty twenty three, Montessorio Special City Council meeting. For the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out you have rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public, uh, the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the special city council meeting. For those using Zoom, participate, there are two icons, chat and Raycan. Please use chat only to report technical increases, being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use Raycan to be recognized as a mayor and be able to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the Raycan option to comment. Our participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and not provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll.
Thank you. I would like to call the special meeting of city council to order on Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty three, at three forty six P M. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Turner, with accent, Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Lawhee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Present.
And Mayor McEachran.
Present. Thank you. Uh, this is a special meeting. Um, and we're gonna, we've got an item on the consent calendar, which is to approve the minutes of the July eleventh, twenty twenty three, special city council meeting. Since there's only one item, I'm not gonna ask if council wants to pull any items. Uh, but I'd like to have public comment on that. If you're here in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're appearing online, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, no one's approaching the podium. Uh, we've got a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Order zero one. With that, uh, we're gonna move to new business, which is consider approval of the community center design as recommended by the community center committee. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm Diana Burton, the city planner. And in January of this year, the city council formed the community center committee to develop and recommend design plans for the remodel and renovation of the former post office building next to city hall to reperfect the building as a community center. The committee has had several public meetings, um, where input was provided from the committee members as well as from the public. Um, additionally, citywide notification, um, of the community center project, um, has been made through the two recruitments that were conducted for committee members, as well as a newsletter that was mailed to all Montessorino households earlier this month. Um, the plans attached to the staff report are the most recent plans that incorporate the committee member and community feedback that has been received. And the community center committee voted yesterday at their meeting to recommend that the city council approve these plans. So staff recommends that the city council consider approving the design plans for the community center remodel. That concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, what I'd like to do is have council ask questions. After that, we'll take public comments. After that, we'll come back for a resolution or discussion and then a resolution if appropriate. Uh, with that, uh, do any of the council members have questions of staff?
This was presented to council also about a month ago. Are there any significant changes from that meeting?
No, I don't think there's any state that can speak to this.
Um, just, just a second. That I can't recall if the plans presented to city council in our joint meeting, is that, is that what you're referring to? If it had one restroom or two?
It had one, I think.
It had one. Okay, so this, um, this has to. This has to. But. Go ahead, council member Craig. So I would just like to find out the reasoning that we are not expanding the building all the way to this building. It seems like if we have an opportunity to do this now, this would be the time to do it. We're probably never going to get a crack at this, and we're leaving some square footage on the floor here. Understood. All that though.
Uh, hi, my name is Jacqueline Greenmeyer, and I represent Polk Town Associates. Um, we did have this discussion at a prior meeting. Um, we discussed the pros and cons of connecting the buildings. Um, one of the main pros of not connecting them is, uh, structural integrity. Um, there is an addition happening and to the, that building over there. And it, um, once you connect it to, then the whole building has to be seismically upgraded. And all of the walls and, uh, will have to be, and any engineer you talk to would say that they would have to reanalyze the whole structure as a whole. That's one, one reason. Number two, we felt like the, the uses of the spaces were entirely different. That space, um, not only is gonna be used for city purposes, but it's also for the public. And we didn't feel that we wanted somebody renting the space to maybe necessarily have access to the structure. And then, um, I think that, and then aesthetically, I think we like the idea of having this visual separation and entry point between the two buildings. We have an arbor proposed for, um, in between, where you can walk through and sort of enter into the space from the sidewalk. Um, through the, you know, the butterfly garden and all that. So there were several reasons, but we did sort of go through this and, and pass the ones.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just asked this question. I've been asked a couple of times, and
Yeah.
I didn't really have a specific reason, though.
It would be analyzed, not just structurally, but have to be analyzed for, um, like the, the occupancy. Um, there's several different ways would have to be analyzed together.
Right.
And that means work that would have to be done here, and we'd add more to the budget itself.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Okay. Uh, with that, what I'd like to do is now open this for public comment. Uh, there's no one, uh, here in chambers, uh, from the public. And if you're appearing online, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. With that, I'll bring it back to council for any further discussion or emotion.
It looks like you've done a great job, and I think you're making a good job of needing to separate. And making the subcommittee, I think, was a good idea, so that the community has had a chance to get involved with it. Architects have done a good job, so I, I would move to approve the project.
Move to approve the design.
Right.
I'll second it. We have a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four zero one. With that, the next item is to, is unfinished business. Consider expanding the number of public members on the committee center, community center committee by two, and the responsibilities of the community center committee. Do we have a staff report on that end, or does city attorney Powell wish to make comments on that?
Would love to. So, um, my understanding is the community center committee was established with a variety of tasks that followed along with the phases of the project. And that ultimately, you ended up with seven members. Um, one of the issues that has been discussed is whether or not you could use that committee to, um, be a part or to assist with the capital campaign. And so one of the discussions for you today is, do you want to expand the membership of that committee by two people? And add to them the responsibility of overseeing the capital campaign. Um, one option would be that once the committee, if, if you were to do this, the committee could create a subcommittee, and that subcommittee would be an ad hoc subcommittee that would work on the capital campaign, um, project. They could do their own research work, come back to the committee, make recommendations, and then that committee would make recommendations to the council. Um, the other item to discuss tonight, the idea would be that we would come back at the next meeting in August with a resolution that creating the committee, defining their tasks, and expanding the membership and the council, so wishes. Um, on the documentation that was included when the committee was originally created, it did also include the phase, the construction phase, um, and the, some of the details that are typically more staff-driven, um, duties, dealing with the bidding, um, the meeting with the prospective bidders, meeting with the contractors. Um, and staff is proposing that that be removed from the scope of work for the committee. You have now your new public works director, as well as a project manager, Sarah Chafin, who will be coming on board um, in the next few weeks, that seem ideally suited to take on those tasks, um, rather than doing it by committee, which could become somewhat cumbersome. So we're looking for feedback and then direction to come back with a resolution of the next meeting.
I have a question, having been involved in this process for a little while. Um, my question is, we've gone and solicited interest or applications from the public. And we have an application period for that. I'm not sure if it's eight days or ten days or whatever it is, but could we have the city clerk provide direction to start that process? So that when we come back on the first of August at a regular city council meeting, we can amend the charter and appoint applicants, um, if they apply by then.
Yeah, you would have a two, at the next meeting, it would be a kind of a three-part item. So the one would be to consider the resolution that would potentially expand the membership. And if that were to pass, then you could have the interviews or whatever the process is for selecting the additional members. But you could direct the city clerk to start advertising for that possibility today.
That, to me, sounds, um, good. Uh, any other questions of council? Then, and I would like to take public comment on this, but, um, you're, this is, you're requesting direction on this.
Yeah.
Not, uh, not a, a resolution. Other questions of council to, uh, city attorney Powell? No?
So just to be clear, so right now, we're just discussing, uh, discussing whether two more members should be added to the committee or not. And the committee should also tackle campaigns.
And remove those duties from the committee that are typically more staff. So that would be meeting with the contractors, being involved in the bidding process, um, those types of responsibilities that you would normally assign to a, a staff person.
Yeah, is committee involved, is more common, is the committee involved in discussing with architects and anything else? Um, would, would that be separate, or is the committee still gonna be meeting with architects and looking at the design and stuff like that?
Right, so the design, um, and I'm just looking for the paperwork.
Um, perhaps it would help, be helpful if the city clerk would put up the, um, diagrams, the slides that show what the changes would be. You do a screenshot on that, please. There's a quick question in the meantime. Yes. So on our prior load, where we said, um, that we are approving the center design, is the design locked in now? The, as would the with the site architectural commission, this, the, the design is locked in. And so they can move, they, the architectural team can move forward with applying for a building permit, and all of the engineering can be completed, and that's required. Um, but up here, you see the different phases, and I think that, um, city attorney Powell crossed out certain tasks that were considered in this, in the charter before. And funding has been added to the top there. When you go to the next slide, it talks about the discussion of the, what would happen in the funding, and then it's added operation, which we're gonna have to develop policies, and that's where, this is all for the next meeting, but it's to preview what you're probably going to see at that point in time. Okay. All right, so, 'cause I wasn't sure, when you were saying construction, was that now, now that we've got the drawings, did the construction mean things like the color of the walls, and are we gonna put shelves in and the type of furniture and stuff like that? I mean, how, how far down were, we were initially thinking that they were going to go on that, on those kind of decisions?
So we have been contracted to do the preliminary design, and that's what we put together for you guys. We are waiting for contract to construction, to the construction documents, which would include all of the other subcontract, uh, with then a structural engineer who would design all the structural framing. There would be a MEP designing all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems. And, um, and I'm part of our contractor duty to finish selections as well. So we're quite a bit involved in all of that.
Okay. And if I could just make this quick side note, lots of ethernet ports, please, lots.
I'm sorry.
Lots of ethernet ports.
Got it, for sure.
And a nice central closet that we can put some nice A V equipment.
We have that on the planes.
Thank you.
Can, can you go back on screen? I couldn't see from there. Sorry, it's getting weird. And what, what is the reason for this, uh, issue with the?
Could you just scroll down just a tiny bit, so we can see the bottom of the page there? See that little X?
Not required with the new city employees. But my, my fundamental question was whether this is, I can't think of what he meant. Yeah, my, my basic question was, is, is this an issue on what the role of the city council should be and what the role of staff should be?
Partly, yes, yes. It's so, um, the, uh, attending the bidder's meeting, responding to questions, um, dealing with the bidding process, reviewing construction drawings, all of those involve some specialty skills that you have professional staff to do that, and, um, it would be, it best practice would be to use your professional staff for those things. Also, I think when you're dealing with a committee of seven, maybe nine people, that's cumbersome and, and could take a lot of time.
Yeah, that's, that's a question whether you want a committee to be that, that big or not, I suppose.
I, if, if I may respond, I think that we're absolutely delighted to have Gerald Jordan join and also Sarah Shafan and join the staff. And it's wonderful to have those resources so that they can take this and they can run with it. And the committee will still need, this is for the, for the community center committee, and I think they will be involved, but they won't have to, they, the committee won't be responsible for doing any of those things that have been crossed off. But you would see, I think, under construction, if there are, uh, proposed construction change orders, that may be something where, uh, city engineer Jordan comes back and says, I think this is a change that the committee should know about and seek input on. And, uh, testing the building during commissioning, that's like, you know, the committee could, could basically use the ethernet cords. They could test everything. It's just, you need people to do that. So the committee could, could do that. But the other items are not required since we've got that expertise that, that city attorney Powell had just explained.
Some say the committee is comfortable with this change.
Yes. Yeah?
Yeah, there, uh, that's, that's a very interesting discussion. There's, in every construction, there will be changes, small changes, big changes. So I think we have to trust the city engineer to make a judgment call. Which changes require the input of the commission and we don't. So I'm, I think we should give the city engineer a relatively way in making that decision.
Absolutely. I, I was going to concur with councilmember Avery. I've been on the, an office redesign committee. And, um, if there was a way to get that time back in my life, I would probably live to be a hundred years old. Um, yeah, I, I just, the minutia that was discussed in these things and the, and, and the, luckily, the, uh, construction company said, look, for every day we go over, we're gonna charge you like this ridiculous amount of money, and that's what finally got decisions made, and, and I, I just worry about, you know, expanding the committee. Now, when you went to the second page, it seemed like the focus of the committee was going to be, um, more heavily focused on, on fundraising and stuff like that, and especially if we're bringing in folks who have a really good black book and expertise in funding and, and getting funds, I'm all for that. But, um, in terms of, you know, we've just hired, uh, a, a, uh, a great city engineer, we've got a great building staff, and, and, uh, if those decisions need to be made, it should really be made by, by staff. But, you know, when it comes to funding and doing all of the other ancillary efforts around the community center, I think the committee would be really good for that. Absolutely. I, I would like to, to point out, and we can have this discussion at, at the subsequent meeting. On the operations side, there's a number of policies that are going to have to be considered. Um, how do you schedule events there? What are the usage fees? What are the rental requirements? What are the parking regulations? And I think that the committee can generate the, have those discussions, the public comment, the input, the, the dealing with alternatives, and then recommending, as a recommending body, the city council saying, you know, you still have to pass it, but they recommend these policies, which helps leverage city council. But city council's decision made by go ahead. Yeah, and I think that's a great idea, and one suggestion I would just put out to whoever passes this on to the committee. But the town of Los Gatos will allow organizations to use their chamber, for example. But you have to have police and cleanup and all of these other pieces around it that you're on the hook for. So, you know, I, I think that they might just have a, a pretty decent starting point for us to take a look at it. So because these are some of the things that we're gonna have to factor in, probably shouldn't just say, here's the easy to place, you know? We'll, uh, drop, drop them off on Monday morning, and we'll see you later. Have, have a great event.
Yes, yes, there's a lot of other things for you to be involved with, general policy. Uh, expanding, we go from five to seven basically now, or from seven to nine?
From seven to
Nine.
Seven to nine? So you may want to, the initial capital campaign members, you may want to limit their purpose to do the campaign and not be part of the overall campaign to commit itself, so that you can, so it's more manageable. Otherwise, nine people may be in the dark managing all the time. You may even have problems with getting formers apps.
So I, I think that what I heard, um, city attorney, attorney Powell saying was that the capital campaign could meet, so if you've got nine, a quorum is five, and three or four people could meet and, and not be, have a Brown Act violation, so that they can have discussions and, and, and meet without a duly called meeting. And, but they would have to be part of an ad hoc committee that would be formed by themselves, by the community center committee. And so they could form that, that ad hoc committee.
The committee itself is nine, so you're gonna have more ad hoc meetings than regular meetings? I will rock.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Those are
It probably would depend on what's, what the issue is. So if it's the operations, it's the time to start working on the operations, then you're gonna have more regular meetings. If it's during the project and leading up to, um, the construction, you're probably have, that's, the ad hoc committee may be needing more frequently to try to get the fundraising off the ground. So it'll, it'll depend, but all nine will be members of the full committee. So five of them would be needed for a whole meeting.
Well, it's, it's kind of a work in progress, so we see how it goes, and if you have problems with it, then we use it, and we tell the committee, uh, but then once you're ready, right?
All right.
And, uh, can the committee form a subcommittee, or does that have to be approved by city council?
We'll put it in the, um, resolution that will allow them to do that, so they can do it themselves.
So we have discussed the kind of mixing the two of these items, but I do want to open public comment on item number one, if we've asked questions, if we're satisfied, okay? Um, if you, there's no one from the public here in chambers, if you're appearing ver, uh, remotely, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to make a public comment.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. I will close public comment on, uh, adding two members and changing and amending the responsibilities. Does staff have, uh, appropriate direction from city council?
Yes.
All right, with that, um, item two is again kind of a mix of number one, but specifically, I'd like to have public comment, open public comment, if you're appearing, uh, remotely, please raise your virtual hand on consider changing the charter of the community center committee.
No hands raised.
No hands are raised. I will close public comment on that. And I believe that, uh, you've got sufficient direction on that, you do. And then item, so we're, we're done items one and two. Now, we'd like to talk about item number three, consider authorizing the mayor to invite elected local, state, and federal officials of Montessorino to the annual picnic. And, um, I will put forth, uh, that my, my views before we have a, uh, I don't know, a staff report on this, do we want to have a, do you have a staff report? Do you want to explain what, what it is, or would you like me to explain?
All right.
Um, I believe that it's very important, let me say it differently. I met with, with city manager Leonardi and had some conversations with city or city clerk who's responsible for the city picnic. And I said, hey, it would be good to have a theme this year, this building community in Montessorino, so that we get more people from the public involved. And, and when I've gone out and I've met with different official, elected officials, they're kind of like, where's Montessorino? What's a Montessorino? And I'd like to invite people like, um, our representative, uh, Anna Schu, uh, Senator Josh Becker, um, Senator, or sorry, um, uh, Dave Cortese, uh, Assemblymember Pellerin, Assemblymember Evan Low, and, and just I, I, I would like to be able to sign a letter on behalf of city council, so that they come to our picnic, or at least they're invited there. And so, so that they say, when they're sitting and they're looking at potential legislation, then think, you know what? How does this affect the people in Montessorino? And they think about that, and so that we, as the residents of Montessorino, our residents, their, their voices considered a little more outside of the city of Montessorino. That's essentially what I'd like to do, and and this is not authorizing Brian McEachran. No one cares who I am, but they care who the mayor is. So next year, you know, this would be allowing if our, if our mayor, Wolsheimer, could then do the same. Walshimer could then do the same thing, it's just increasing the, the awareness of Monte Sereno.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think it would be helpful to do that. Just go up the list on who represents Monte Sereno. So the Assemblymembers, Gail Power, Supervisor Joseph Smith, Congresswoman Anna Schuh. Maybe I should, this president Biden too, but I don't know. Senator Feinstein, I guess. I don't want to go that far, but let's put it there. But I think that would be great to get invited and do it in enough time because then all is an excuse. But it is your, what else? But we'd like to get them.
Other questions, comments?
It might, you've probably thought about this already, but it might also make sense to try to get some press coverage from various newspapers, local or statewide. Okay, and also a good speaker system, you know, good stage, something or they want to speak for a couple of minutes, they're gonna do their, showing on a bullhorn, this is fine, but and we got that covered. Okay, great.
I just want to also say, I agree wholeheartedly that this is a great idea. And don't forget Larry Stone, he's always fun to bring to our party. It's fun to listen to him, get the most hated person in some of our county.
Maybe, maybe against a high percentage of people. Also, Monte Sereno represented to the West Valley, Michigan Board of Trustees, I think. Who, former mayor?
Jack Lucas.
Yeah. He can be called in line.
So I believe he's a resident of Monte Sereno, so he would be invited anyways.
But this would be a more official invitation.
Oh, okay.
Because they're setting up formal, with the seat on the board. It's our claim.
So it sounds to me like we've got agreement on this, but I would like to open it for public comment. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. If you'd like to make a comment on this. Close public comment and bring it back. This is for city attorney Powell. Do we need, what do we need to authorize the mayor to sign these?
Just a motion.
Just a motion? I would be looking for a motion then.
So move.
We'll have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero one. With that, I believe, oh, yes, go ahead. Yeah, one comment.
I think I brought this up before, but we absolutely need a better sound system than last year. Last year we had the bullhorn that did not work. People couldn't hear what we were saying. So we, I don't know, we should be responsible for it. I think you mentioned you might have access to some equipment.
Yes.
But we absolutely, especially if you have
So are, are, are you saying that you want to, well, it's not an agenda item, so we can't make any directions. But I, I think I think the point is with that, I would like to, any other comments? No, no. If that is the case, I will adjourn the special meeting of Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 4:18 PM.